Hi, everyone. Welcome to the February 7th, 2022 Long Meadows Select Board Meeting. This is Select Board Chair Mark Strange. I will be confirming that all members in persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Marantz.
Here.
Josh Levine.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
Tom LaCusa.
Here.
And staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadows Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convening by Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website, identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q and A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment for resident comment using the Zoom webinar format. Members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use their raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and un-mute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. First up on the agenda is Select Board announcements. Stickers for the Long Meadow Recycling Center went on sale at the DPW on Tuesday, February 1st. If you want to purchase stickers in person, please bring your vehicle registration and driver's license. Stickers can be purchased with the following options. Again, in person at the DPW from Tuesday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. You can mail in your recycling sticker application to the DPW. Their address is 170 Dwight Road, Long Meadow, Mass., 01106. Or you can buy them online at longmeadow.org. Also, the Eastern Hampton Shared Public Health Services has collaborated with the past Department of Public Health and Cataldo Ambulance to offer COVID-19 vaccinations for eligible individuals ages five and up. The clinic will be held at the Greenwood Center, which is located at 231 Main Road. The clinic will be held Sunday, February 13th from 1:00 to 5:00. Primary vaccination, primary vaccination series as well as boosters will be offered. Although registration is required, please visit the homepage on longmeadow.org for more information on how to register. Also, the 2022 Annual Town Census Forms were mailed to all households at the end of January. Filling out the census form, please remember to include all residents living in your household and their birthdays. After reviewing the form and making any necessary changes, please sign and date the bottom of the form before returning it to the town clerk. The annual town census is used for school registration, grant funding opportunities for the town, and helps maintain an accurate, up-to-date voter's list for elections. Filling out the census form does not register you to vote or change your political affiliation. Signed forms should be returned within 10 days by either mailing it back at the envelope, provided to you, via the drop box to the right of the front door of the town hall, or by dropping it off in person at the town hall at 20 Williams Street. Anytime between 8:15 and 4:30, Monday through Thursday, or Friday from 8:15 to noon. If you don't receive a form or if you have questions or concerns, please contact the town clerk. Her number is 413-565-4103. Or she can be emailed at kingram, I-N-G-R-A-M, at longmeadow.org. Okay, next up, we have a presentation by our Assistant Town Manager regarding our new MVP Grant Action Grant Proposal. Is Corinne here? Yep, I just moved Corinne in now. Corinne, whenever you're ready.
Hi, thanks. So, we wanted to have a brief presentation to the Select Board today regarding what our office is planning on submitting for our upcoming MVP Action Grant. I'll just start by saying that the MVP Action Grant Rounds are not open yet, but the anticipated opening to submit applications will be in mid-March to early April. And right now, they are accepting expressions of interest. So, we have an appointment next week to talk about our grant idea with greater detail and workshop it to being as competitive as it can be. I'm going to, I'm going to share my screen in a second, but I just wanted to start by saying that the overall idea for the MVP Action Grant is to apply to update Long Meadows' long-range plan with a climate resilience lens. And that climate resilience lens is what makes it MVP, a very attractive project for MVP. This is something that several communities in our region have done over the past, last year especially, but also the year before. And it's a project type that MVP is very excited about. The, right now, we're in the brainstorming phase of exactly what the project will entail, but we have a high, high-level understanding of what the budget will look like and who our project partners might be. And so, the presentation today is to essentially go over the basics of master planning because our long-range plan was completed, I believe, in 2004. So, it was a long time ago. If anyone here was involved with that, I'm sure that memory, those memories are starting to fade. And I'm sure there's also quite a few people who were not involved in that original process. So, I wanted to bring this presentation to the Select Board today to give you an introduction as to what we're planning on applying for. And then, I will come to a future Planning Board meeting with, once the project is more fleshed out and we actually have the application period open with a letter of support and commitment that I will ask you to vote on signing. So, today's a good chance to get any sort of introductory questions answered. And then, the next time I come back, we'll have some more specific details that we can go into. So, I'm going to try to share my screen. Oh, Mike Worlandit says that I'm unable to share. Should be all set now. All right, yep. Okay, can you all see this? Great, so I'm going to go to full screen mode. And so, you can see this on the screen, but I'll just say that this is not a presentation I created. I'm borrowing it from the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. And because of that, it speaks about Massachusetts communities generally. And there are some details that will not apply to Long Meadow, you know, regarding specifics of town government. But generally, the overall process does apply to us. This is the overview of the presentation. We're going to be going through what is a master plan, what the purposes are, the legal requirements, and specifically, the legally required contents of the master plan, and then a timeline, key steps and outcomes, in addition to anticipated expense. I'm not going to go into the rest of the presentation, the getting started through planning and zoning in Massachusetts and tips and lessons learned because those get sort of more fine detail. Right now, we'll just be going over the introduction of what is master planning and why do it. So, a master plan, or in Long Meadow, we call it a long-range plan. In other communities, they call it a comprehensive plan or a community plan, or sometimes even a community development plan. And in terms, for the purposes of this presentation and for Mass. General Law, those are all basically synonymous. So, in Long Meadow, we call it the long-range plan, but this presentation will call it the master plan. It's the same thing. So, what is a master plan? The master plan is a future vision and policy guide for the town that plans for the community's physical evolution and also provides a comprehensive analysis of all aspects of community development. These plans, as our name implies, are long-range. But what that means is really up to us as we develop the, the community plan or the long-range plan. They typically vary from five to 15 years. It's important to note that these long-range plans are not zoning bylaws or regulations. Once this plan is adopted, it's adopted just like any other plan. It's a policy document. And it's a visioning document, but it is not law. It's not a bylaw, and it has no teeth in and of itself. It's up to town staff and town committees and boards to actually implement the strategies that will be identified in the master plan or long-range planning process. So, why, why do we plan? This is a snarky little cartoon, but I think it's, it's something that many communities across the country, and certainly here in the valley face, Long Meadow too. We don't have a lot of time in our day-to-day, you know, visioning for the future. But then, what that means is that if we don't have long-range plans in place, we tend to be making split-minute decisions that are uncoordinated. And so, they might not, all the decisions and all the individual decisions we make not, might not be actively working together to meet the vision that we've decided to set for ourselves. So, a master planning community helps towns manage their growth and change. It provides for orderly and predictable development, protects environmental resources, sets priorities for developing and maintaining infrastructure and public facilities. It can strengthen local identity, and it creates a framework for future policy decisions while promoting open and democratic planning. And it provides guidance to landowners, developers, and permitting authorities. I think we could see, you know, in the recent town meeting, the zoning question at recent town meeting, or any, any individual decisions that maybe some boards or committees have to make at their own meetings, how having one shared vision that the town has bought into and there's robust engagement can help make, can help guide decision-makings. And it's really a place to pull together individual plans, such as the Open Space and Recreation Plan, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, et cetera, into one unified vision. State requirements for master planning are all under Mass. General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81D, where planning boards are required to prepare master plans with the following elements: the statements of goals and policies, land use, housing, economic development, natural and cultural resources, open space and recreation, services and facilities, circulation and implementation. So, traditionally, these are all separate chapters within a master plan, although the, the format of the master plan is really up to the communities themselves. And some get creative with that. As some examples from the last MVP round that funded Resilient Master Plans show. Communities can also choose to include local additions that they might want to add either as chapters or sections within their master plans. And those can include items such as focuses on individual villages or neighborhoods within a community, smart growth. This is, I want to call out energy, climate action, and sustainability because as this will be an MVP Action Grant for us, we will really be focusing on those three quote-unquote "local additions" as well. We're going to be master planning through the lens of climate action. And then, education, governance, and public health and social services are also often talked about. So, touched on this briefly before, master planning is really a community vision statement. And it includes data analysis of past trends, existing conditions, and then estimates and future projections. And then, it sets, after the data analysis, we use the data analysis to set goals, policies, and actions. And we also visualize the data and many maps. Master plans have an opportunity to highlight, sometimes for the first time, some emerging issues such as demographic changes, the use of social media, either how we do use it well or how we could use it better, how our residents are using it, and what, how they look to us to use it. Aging infrastructure, and more suburban, or excuse me, urban lifestyles. How development near transit, this is, that's something, you know, that's clearly applicable to, you know, cities such as Springfield, et cetera, but also, you know, commercial development near transit for more suburban communities such as ours. Climate change. Often, communities are finding that their zoning is antiquated, and this is an opportunity to identify and then create strategies to update zoning codes. Highlights the issues of shrinking tax bases for local governments, any public health concerns. Obviously, we've had a pandemic since 2004. Energy and then building codes and materials. Significantly, Massachusetts is in the process of soliciting feedback on their stretch code, the stretch building code. So, this is, would be an opportunity for Long Meadow to come together to talk about, you know, whether we would be adopting the updated stretch code or what we think about our current code, et cetera. So, the process can take anywhere between less than a year, just under a year, to up to two years, depending on all of these, you know, considerations here, such as local capacity, who's in charge, the public process, how robust that process is, how big our community is, the age irrelevance of existing master plans. So, ours is pretty old, so the update of it is going to be pretty significant. The degree of agreement or disagreement about major community issues, what the catalyst for this process was in our, what's going on in the community generally. So, our track record, perceptions of local governments, our form of government, and also our budget. And the process works again by looking at past trends, saying, where were we? Where are we now? And how did we get here? And is this where we want to be in any of those previous chapters that I spoke about before? And then, if not, how do we change where we are and how do we define where we want to be? And if we think we're doing great in some of those categories, how do we maintain that momentum? How do we protect the work that we've done so far? And that includes visiting and goal-setting with residents generally, but also interviewing stakeholders and topic experts, both in the community and also in the region. Having public meetings and focus groups specifically. Surveys are a robust component of master planning. And then, also using other various internet engagement tools to increase, you know, response to the surveys and attendance to the focus groups, et cetera. So, when we talk about discovering where we are today, that's going to review, include a review and synthesis of our past and existing plan studies and reports. And it's going to be a lot of data collection and then data analysis. And those bullet points there show where much of that data can come from and the different types of data that we'll be looking for. I'm not going to read all of these to you. But I'll give you a second to look through them. So, the data analysis itself will include trends and estimates. And then, as I said before, we're going to ask the questions, where are we going given these trends and estimates? And how do we decide if that's actually where we want to be going? And then, if so, keeping up that momentum? And if not, how do we reverse course or sort of diverge course here? So, that includes looking at our opportunities and challenges and analysis of our options and coming up with consensus around strategies. I like that this, the last question there, how do we get there? That last bullet point is early success actions. I'm not quite sure if this is what they meant by that, but to me, it means, you know, above that is implementation plan and implementation committee. I think the early success actions, you know, includes, how do we, how do we identify what the low-hanging fruit is to make sure that we feel like we're building momentum and we can achieve some of these goals? They're not all 20 years in the future where we might forget about them. So, coming to the end of the presentation here, outcomes. The outcome should be an adopted comprehensive plan or, again, master plan, long-range plan, with consistency among all, all elements. We don't want different chapters to be setting goals that disagree with each other. There should be an implementation committee identified at the end, just as there's a planning committee that identifies upfront. And the implementation committee will be responsible for guiding implementation process, sponsoring implementation activities, keeping citizens, and I would say, staff and boards and committees actively engaged, and conducting some sort of monitoring process, an annual review process for the master plan itself. We don't want this plan to be finished and then sort of no one, no one has been appointed the lead to making sure that the plan gets implemented. So, it will be important to be thinking about that from the beginning and identifying successful ways that we can make sure that the plan gets implemented as we go. So, in Massachusetts, the master plan adoption requires a majority vote of the planning board. The planning board is the only board or committee that can officially adopt the master plan according to Mass. General Laws. It does not require adoption by the local legislative body, but we still could decide to bring it to town meeting, for example, for vote as a way to, as a way to indicate popular acceptance of the plan and also, you know, educate more people about its existence. And the plan itself is a blueprint, again, for zoning, capital improvements, et cetera. In and of itself, it's not a bylaw. The expense is, it, it depends on how we implement the planning process. So, one thing that this slide covers is that we don't necessarily have to hire a consultant. The MVP Action Grant will be to hire a consultant, though. The, before, if you think about the time range that was identified, nine months to two years. The multiple years would be if this was just on staff to really be shepherding through with the guidance of boards and committees, but all the data review, et cetera, were on town staff. Hiring a consultant will let us really focus energy on this in a shorter timeframe and a more concerted effort. And also, the consultant could bring expertise in community planning, et cetera. They bring fresh ideas and awareness of what other communities are doing. And they, you know, if we think about Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, for example, they have specialized GIS staff, et cetera. So, they have some real skillsets to bring in. We could, regional planning agencies are sole, I think they're called sole source providers, where we don't necessarily have to go through a bid process to just hire them for a planning, a, a planning project. But if we were to decide that we wanted to solicit bids other than via the regional planning agency Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, we would just have to make sure we follow procurement as outlined in Chapter 30B. And so, what is a cost? Again, this varies depending on how we go about doing it. I've spent some time looking at the budgets of communities that have applied for similar projects for, from MVP over the past last year and the year before. And I think that it's very reasonable to expect that we'd be spending around $100,000 to $115,000 total project cost on the master planning effort alone. MVP has a 25% match requirement. So, that for about $115,000 project, that would be about $28,000, I think if my math is correct, worth of match, which I think we could either very nearly meet or meet totally with in-kind staff labor. Are, the reason that our master plan budget right now looks to be a little bit, sort of like in the mid-range level, is because we are talking about updating the master plan while simultaneously having two subtasks. And the two subtasks are to have a regulatory review of our general bylaws and our zoning bylaw to identify areas where we could be incorporating best practices for climate resilience that our code either right now just doesn't speak to and/or actively establishes barriers to, let's say, like low-impact development, et cetera, for climate resilience. And then, the second subtask would be to work with capital planning committee and municipal staff to identify ways to incorporate resilience and energy efficiency or greenhouse gas mitigative strategies into our capital planning process as well to make sure that the town is putting money into, or is prioritizing projects that have done some consideration of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, helping Long Meadow meet climate goals. The last thing I'll say is that you will remember at the special town meeting, the, I think it was Article 16, but I could be getting the number wrong. The residents voted to have the town establish a climate action plan. And, but we didn't, that, in the article, didn't specify what that would look like. I believe that incorporating the climate resilience and greenhouse gas mitigation into the master plan is a way for us to achieve that goal while incorporating it into our long-range planning as a whole and not having a whole separate other plan that we have to keep track of and, you know, make it fit with other planning processes. So, I believe that... Yeah, this is getting, once we start the project, so I don't think we need to talk about this now. So, that's the end of my presentation. I'm trying to stop share. There we go. And I can definitely answer questions if anybody has any right now. I know it was sort of high level. Yeah.
Thank you for that, Corinne. Does anybody have any questions for Corinne?
Mark?
I do. Thank you, Corinne. Very good, good presentation. First of all, can we get a copy of that PowerPoint deck just to kind of refer to? That'd be great. I had a couple of questions. One is that have you identified or will you be identifying community groups to get involved with this? You know, the last was done by a different group. And, and how are you going to go about doing that, I guess? And the related part to that is my second question, which is how do we prevent this document from becoming a collection of special interest group requirements based on these groups?
Yeah, those are good questions. So, and I'm just making sure I have a notebook to write down some notes here. So, first of all, the, the planning process will be, you know, there will be heavy involvement with town staff, of course. But what will initially happen is that the planning board will be working with the select board. As we, as we discussed in the presentation, Mass. General Law identifies the planning board as the authority over the master planning process. However, of course, the select board, you know, the town needs your support and also resources to be guiding this planning process through. So, I think this is where it starts to come down to how we, how we can individual, how we can make the planning process individual to Long Meadow, how, how these two boards will work together. But so, the two boards will work together to identify a, a steering committee for the master planning process. And traditionally, that would be made up of representatives from boards and committees across Long Meadow, the select board, the planning board, but also the Conservation Commission, probably Energy and Sustainability, the Council on Aging, et cetera. And so, the steering committee in and of itself should be made up of diverse groups who already represent their sort of constituents, so to speak, I guess. And from there, we start to work with, I, or I guess I I, or I guess identify the, uh, um, community-based organizations that may be in Long Meadow, such as churches, uh, maybe private schools, um, Bay Path, for example, where, um, we would want to be, uh, inviting representatives either to stakeholder focus groups, but also to help us spread the word about the surveys out there. Can you please make sure your constituents are filling it out? Um, we're going to have this public forum. Can you make sure that your, um, congregation knows about it and, you know, will attend, you know, via Zoom? So it will definitely be a partnership with, uh, both, um, town volunteers, town staff, and then, and sort of lay, lay groups. And, and then I, I will also say that the, the consultant that we hire, they will need to have some expertise in developing robust public engagement. So whether that's Pioneer Valley Planning Commission or like a private planning firm, that, that's going to be one of the criteria that we look at to say, you have a great track record of really reaching out yourselves and figuring out who community leaders are and how to get their involvement and their, their constituents' involvement within the planning group. In terms of having it not turn into a amalgam of, um, special interests, I think, you know, that's an interesting question. I, I don't know, um, one thing we have to do is, is to make sure our community engagement is robust and figure out how to meet people where they are. And so that includes just regular residents and making sure that we hear from, you know, quote unquote, unaffiliated regular residents who are just coming to the forums, coming to the public meetings, filling out the survey because they live in Long Meadow, not because, you know, a, a community leader necessarily from a group that they belong to, you know, told them to or said, hey, we want to, we want to make sure that this ends up in the plan. At the same time, um, and again, the consultant will help us with that. And I'm sure that you all, you know, have ideas on how to do that too. This will really be, you know, a group project, so to speak. But at the same time, we do want to hear from the special interests, um, because, you know, either they employ people in Long Meadow or they, um, you know, they're influential in some way. So you're right, I, I agree with you in that we don't want to, we want to make sure the long-range plan isn't just sort of, we heard mostly from this one group, and so it sort of turns into the their long-range plan. But we do want to make sure that we're hearing from everyone. Is that a, just the question?
That's great. Thanks.
All right, Tom.
Just on you myself. Uh, Corinne, thanks for the, uh, for the presentation. And, um, you didn't mention anything about sort of outside compliance groups. Uh, so like with our collective, with dealing with rainwater, you know, there are certain regulations that would affect us. Looking at ADA compliance, um, none of that stuff was mentioned. How does that, where, is there a certain area that, that fits in?
Yeah, that's a great point. So, um, one thing is, is that we do have, we have a lot of plans and studies and analyses that have been done for various, um, to user where various, uh, compliance, um, needs that we have that have sort of just, they've been done and then maybe they're on the town website, or maybe they're not on the town website. And they, they sort of live there and some staff know about them and they know we need to be working towards and, and probably are working towards, you know, fulfilling the recommendations in those analyses or, or plans or studies. Uh, but maybe some other staff are totally, you know, ignorant to the fact that they exist. So one of the, one of the purposes of the long-range plan is to really look at all of those documents and pull them all together and to make sure that either they're at least referenced, if not the strategies themselves also moved over into the long-range plan. And there's some, some sort of indication of what their, the status is of them, so that we're able to, you know, not have to worry about the fact that we have twenty-five different plans that are rolling around and sitting in different offices. And we have no idea what's going on with them. I'm not saying this is not a Long Meadow thing specifically, right? This is like a, one of the problems with planning generally. And the long-range plan will allow us to sort of have a, it's an introductory look at all of those different compliance areas. And we can look at the strategies identified there and maybe, so we saw, for example, in the list of chapters that were required, open space and recreation was a chapter. There's no way that that chapter is going to be as in-depth as our open space and recreation plan, which we just completed, uh, two years ago. Um, at this point, you know, that, that plan itself is hundreds of pages or at least a hundred something pages, whereas this chapter will maybe be twenty. So what, the way that the long-range plan, um, can be helpful in that regard is that it can point to these more in-depth, more detail-oriented plans that already exist, but pull in the highlights altogether, so we're able to use it as sort of the index. And in terms of the areas that, for compliance that we maybe haven't gotten up to speed on. So, for example, the ADA, I do know, um, I can't, I can't, maybe someone else could, but, um, I can't speak off the top of my head as to when those ADA studies were completed, but they were completed within the last, you know, handful of years. So we do have them for our town facilities. What we don't necessarily have is the most up-to-date or robust stormwater, uh, management, um, bylaw, uh, you know, to use your other example. And so the master plan could say, hey, great job. You did this study for ADA, now make sure you actually implement the, um, strategies that are identified in this specific document. Now, the other strategy for stormwater, which will be in a different chapter, you know, but, you know, they might say, a strategy might come out of there, you need to update this and it needs to happen by this year in order to be in compliance with Mass DEP's, uh, you know, permit. Um, and then, you know, that gets sort of checked off as maybe a higher priority just because there's an impending deadline for that. So there will be an analysis of what's already been done. How do we keep making progress on it? Have we made enough progress? And then an analysis of what hasn't been done? And then how do we get to where we need to be for compliance? And that's also where the regulatory review will come in, because a lot of those compliance pieces have some sort of regulatory or policy components, um, that the consultant can take a look at. Um, you know, and say, you're missing X, Y, and Z from your stormwater management ordinance, for example.
And, and thank you. A good answer. And the, uh, the other thing is some of our plans are held up by the state. You know, for example, we have, uh, two middle school buildings that need to, we need to figure out what's going to happen. But the state, until they make decisions about funding, what we're going to do to, for a middle school, if we're going to have two buildings, if we're going to have one building, what are we going to do? We also have, you know, the Greenwood Community Center, which has been vacated by the adult center. Uh, so there's a lot of empty space there. There's the community house and the town hall, which have ADA compliance issues. So those five buildings, you know, are sort of a big issue that would need to be addressed in this plan. And, uh, but the other side is that, I think, I didn't see any place where we would get input from, because I know you, you talked about different departments and so forth, but you also look at departments like, uh, the police department, the fire department, um, DPW, who are, spend a lot of time in the community and kind of look around at what's going on. And their, their input is really valuable. You know, we, I know we have a lot of committees and everything else, but those are folks that are on the ground every day in our town. And, uh, and they see what's going on and they can have a lot of good input. And is that going to, what, that's a section where that's addressed, I hope?
Yeah, I think, I think that there, we can sort of, I totally agree with you. I think we can address that in several ways. One is that there, there's not really requirements, to my understanding, um, as to who, who sits on the, um, steering committee. The, I'll send you the presentation and that, the last couple of slides in the presentation that I didn't go into, when it, it's sort of talking about getting the project started and getting rolling, that does have some more details as to how big those committees, those committees usually are, the steering committees, and who usually sits on them. But, um, it's really up to the individual community. And you'll see on that slide, like it, it's typically as few as eight people and as many as sixteen. So it's sort of like half or double, you know, the amount. And it's up to, um, us, you know, usually the select board working with the planning board to sort of decide what that could look like. I don't think, I, I'm not going to talk in positives here, but I don't see any reason right now where we wouldn't want to include some town staff on that committee. Like we could include, um, uh, DPW, you know, super, or we could include, uh, Chief Dearborn as the emergency management director, um, Chief Stocks, et cetera. You know, or, you know, Parks and Rec Director, you know, any, anyone that we think, you know, this voice seems to be missing, you know, or can't be captured by the volunteer boards and committees in and of itself. So we should have that expertise from the ground. At the same time, the steering committee is just the steering committee, so representation is very important on the steering committee. But we will be working, um, the town staff will be working with whichever planning consultants we hire to really be conducting robust engagement. And it's not just of residents. They will also be working with town staff to sort of see, what, you know, where do you see, do you see like that you have certain, um, this is just an example, but there's certain priorities as leader, you know, that you're hearing from leadership, but you're not, you don't have the support to actually implement those priorities. Or you know that this isn't your plan, like this ended up in the, uh, open space and recreation plan, but you don't have the ability to actually implement the strategies. It's like the Parks Department doesn't have the, you know, uh, ability to actually implement those strategies or the resources to. We all want to know those things and that should end up in the, um, master plan as well, because then a strategy could be, you know, make sure that, um, I don't, you know, have a specific example, but like make sure there's more robust resources available to the Parks Department in order for them to implement the OSRP. So it'll ultimately come down to, the formation of that committee will ultimately come down to, um, what Long Meadow decides. Long Meadow wants to do once we're awarded the grant, but it should be a consideration that we're keeping, you know, all the time of, are we making sure we're hearing from everyone who really knows what they're talking about, I guess?
Okay. Thank you, Corinne.
Anybody else have questions for Corinne? Very good. Thank you so much for that. We'll look forward to getting that presentation and, uh, hearing more about it in the future.
Great. Thank you.
Um, Mike, do we have any residents who want to make comments?
Yes, I do see one.
Just a reminder, if you'd like to make a comment, please click the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. Moving in, Walter Gunn.
Hi, good evening. Just listened to that presentation from Corinne, just as a member of the planning board. I just want to quickly say that, um, we're sort of on board with the process. I think, uh, we should have some, uh, discussions as to what the scope of this master plan is versus the long-range plan. And, uh, sooner than later, we should probably get together and review the old long-range plan and what the goals of the new master plan is and, and, uh, decide on the scope. Because, uh, I'm just a little bit concerned about, uh, what Long Meadow really needs. Um, I don't think even Agawam, uh, Mark has a, a, a full master plan. I know you have a open space or a recreation plan. They're very difficult to do. They're very difficult to execute. Our long-range plan was a, was a very tough process. Mark Gold, you probably remember the process. I don't know if, um, uh, maybe Steve Marantz, were you on that? Did you have any pro, work on that?
I, no, I knew, I was, I knew the folks involved. I was not actually literally involved in it.
Okay. So, yeah, so, um, I know we're going for a grant. And the question is, uh, what's the value of the grant versus, uh, what we need to do for human and, and resources to, to get this process done? And what's the ultimate goal? So, I don't know. Uh, Mark, your chair, I would suggest, um, maybe having a little small group of, uh, maybe one member of every, uh, some of our, um, uh, community development, uh, departments. So, you know, like Conservation Concom and Historic and Planning and just, maybe we should just mull this around with Corinne and Lynn and, you know, uh, decide what's going on, because it's a very complicated process. I mean, Lynn, you would agree, it's, uh, master plans are a, a big task. So that's my, uh, comments.
Thank you, Walter. Yeah, I, um, we can get with Lynn and Corinne and talk about that.
Okay. But we're happy, we're on board. The planning board has, has actually, uh, voted to, um, go ahead with this process. So, uh, uh, both Lynn and Corinne do have a, an endorsement from our board, uh, to go forward with this, just to let you know. But I think we need an executive, I think somebody from, a chief elected official has to sign on to this eventually and, and find the money in the, in the town budget.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Walter. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
I just had a question. If, if Walter could get the, uh, select board members a copy of the current long-range plan, so we could begin to have, looking that over before we actually get to meet.
Yeah, Corinne actually, I think, has the, we, we got copied on it. We have actually copies of all the important documents we did. We have the open space plan, uh, we have the MVP plan, um, what's the other one, the other, uh, one we did? Um, I'm drawing a blank. There's a, there's a third one we did. I remember it was to get a grant for the fire department. And then the open, yes, and the long-range plan is, is also, uh, um, documented. So Corinne can send those out to you guys. And, uh, you'll see that, the long-range plan is, I'm sorry, I don't want to bore you guys. You probably have a big agenda here tonight, but the long-range plan, as you recall, Mark, was, uh, sort of like, it was a grant from the state. It was strange in the sense that we sort of had a consultant that sort of guided us through the whole process. We had, we had breakout groups. We had everybody doing everything from, um, um, you know, open space to planning, to whatever, whatever went into that plan. There was, there were breakout groups, but it seemed like the consultant controlled it. I think in your, uh, in a master plan situation, which is a little heavier, heavier duty, more heavy lifting, we have to now, um, really, we put together groups, we sort of controlled the process and you, you do want to hire the right agency to, or organization to manage it. Again, this was a grant, we grabbed it, it was a great idea. Long Meadow never had any focus on, on, on long-range planning before that plan. So at the time, one of the big things I thought was interesting is we identified like how to save all the homes on Long Meadow Street. At the time, we thought, um, they were going to be torn down and destroyed. And because they're, uh, they were fuel inefficient and, and those are the kind of ideas that came out of that plan. And to, to Lynn, just to let you know, the town manager, uh, at the time, uh, which was our first town manager, was Robin Crosby, and she, uh, meticulously had a spreadsheet and checked off all of the, the, the little things that long-range plan did. But again, the long-range plan then was like short-term things. Like, for example, one you're, you're familiar with now was, uh, the traffic circulation around the big Y. I mean, there were little, little details that we checked off and did. Um, this master plan could be important because now we're looking at, uh, properties in town that we need to utilize or at least, uh, make more appropriate uses of. We have water tower, we have Turner Park, we have middle school consolidation, probably what to do with the land, um, lands in the meadows, uh, the old former DPW, we just talked about, someone just mentioned, um, the whole Greenwood, uh, center. So, um, it's a cool thing. But I think we should break down just to a small group and have a little chat about this. Decide, you know, break it out to a bigger, bigger plan. I think, uh, Corinne should meet with somebody in person and try to, uh, digest this a little bit before we really dive into it. Because I think Mark Gold, somebody brought up something about special interest groups, and that's true too. You, you know, you got to control this, so it becomes, uh, that's what the planning board does. We look at the town-wide amenities. And so something like a long-range plan, uh, again, it has to be town-wide amenities for everybody. And how you keep, uh, you know, people throwing, um, pieces of metal into the cog wheels is, is an important process. So anyway, I'm just, uh, food for thought, but, um, we're on board. I think it's a great idea and I think, um, we should go forward.
Thank you, Walter. Good to see you.
Good to see you guys. Take care. Watch the rest of the meeting. I'm off. Bye-bye.
Uh, do we have any other residents who want to make a comment? Mike?
Yes, give them more. Move them in now?
Please.
Laurie, if you could just unmute your mic to speak, please?
For self. I didn't know how to do that. Okay. Everybody hear me? Okay?
Hi Lori, can you say your name and your address for us, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. My name's Lori Robinson and I live at 53 Warren Terrace. Uh, thank you to the select board for this opportunity to reiterate my strong objection to the unnecessary and unwanted high-pressure ever-source gas pipeline expansion project in Long Meadow. Here are three significant and indisputable reasons why I object to this project. Number one, gas is a health issue. Gas contains methane, which is 30 times more damaging to our air quality than carbon. To make matters worse, much of today's gas is fracked, which increases its carcinogenic nature. Our location in the Pioneer Valley traps these gases from old leaky pipes and contributes to one of the highest rates of asthma and other respiratory ailments in the U.S. And now we're learning that our gas cooking stoves are leaking methane from gas into our homes, even when we're not using them to cook. Some towns have banned the new installation of gas stoves. Number two, gas is a safety issue. EverSource should concentrate on fixing the many gas leaks in Western Mass rather than expanding gas service. We're all aware of the numerous gas explosions, the kind that occurred in Springfield, the Merrimack Valley and other locations across the country. The location of, of the Long Meadow proposed gas meter complex, which will emit pollutants into the air, is around the corner from Wolf Swamp Elementary School and the proposed gas pipeline will cut through heavily residential parts of town. Number three, gas is a serious threat to our climate. Continuing to expand the use of fossil fuels is exactly the wrong action to be taking at this time. Every day on the news, we see the devastating man-made effects of climate change on our environment. And here's a frightening bit of information. A recent report from the journal Climate warned that New England is warming faster than the rest of the country. Changes in New England's climate are threatened by the seasonality, the natural resources and the economic underpinnings of the region, the authors wrote. Quote, "The warming of the region, the shifting of the seasons and the changes in precipitation all threaten New England's distinctive natural landscape." So, is this the time to expand gas pipeline? No, this is the time to take a stand against it. Long Meadow residents have voted overwhelmingly to ban this gas pipeline expansion project. And at the state level, the current administration recently strengthened the 2008 Mass Global Warming Solutions Act, which requires that we must cut greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030. Let's do our part as Long Meadow residents to make sure that we don't allow expansion of the unhealthy, dangerous and destructive use of gas. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Uh, Mike, any other residents?
Do not see anyone right now.
Hey, uh, moving on to select board comments. Yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Now, I have, uh, just a kind of a litany of a few things to report. I, I, I attended a bunch of meetings over the last three weeks and just want to let people know. I was at the building committee meeting and they are wrapping up the adult center. A, a couple of who sends, they're looking to protect the downspouts, for example, of the DPW building. Uh, but mostly they're looking at their next action steps and, and what that will be relative to, um, buildings on the Capitol Plan and other buildings around town, whether they be the, or sometimes they're called, called the old VFW building or, or sometimes called the, you know, some of those other facilities. But building committee remains engaged, even though those major projects have, uh, have wrapped up. Also attended the Metropolitan Planning Committee meeting of the PVPC. Uh, and, and, uh, most of the projects they're looking at, they're looking at a lot of, uh, shovel-ready projects, the, the projects on, on the transportation program. None of them right now are Long Meadow or impact Long Meadow directly, but we'll continue to monitor that. So if anybody wants to know, let me know about those. Please contact me. Attended the PVTA meeting, uh, there was a, they're, they're applying for some grants that may or may not impact towns like Long Meadow. I sent Lynn the information. I'm not convinced that Long Meadow can take advantage of it, but if we can, you know, Lynn and Corinne have that, that information. So it's worth us monitoring to see what they're doing and what they're up to. Uh, I was also at the, in the county regional retirement boards meeting, uh, this past week. Uh, to tell you, there's nothing new is to tell you that's not good news, but they, they continue to try to, try to make some changes. They have in fact, uh, got a one new board member, uh, who is doing a great job trying to keep them up to date. Paul Sturzick is the chair of their audit committee and he made a report. So there's potentially some items being implemented there relative to, uh, internal audits and policies and procedures, kinds of things that Paul brought to the town of Long Meadow that can only be positive. I'm not quite certain where those are going to go because they haven't said they're, you know, adopt them yet. But at least there are people who are looking into the, in the county regional retirement board. Uh, as terms of the finances of board, you know, they're about the same as they have been in the past. They're, they, they seem to be doing well with their external investments through the Prit, uh, in, in Boston, but their internal expenses remain fairly high and that's one of the things that several of us have tried to get them to address. And hopefully that will be addressed as they go on, but they do have pretty high expenses. And finally, uh, Thursday, tomorrow or Thursday, I think it's Thursday, there's a meeting in the Scantic Valley Regional Health Trust. Um, the preliminary documents indicate that they will be reviewing our, uh, or the, the system-wide healthcare charges for the next fiscal year. And I'm not really comfortable that, that they're going to come in at real low numbers, uh, based on what their, their numbers are showing, but they haven't adopted anything yet. But I think we need to continue to monitor it. I will. Arlene Miller, as you know, from our town is the chair. Uh, last year they used a lot of their, uh, what I'll call resources and, and, uh, reserve funds, uh, to try to hold the, the, the rates reasonable. I'm not sure they're going to be able to do it again this week, but we should know and it will obviously impact us as we move forward with our, our budgeting process. So I know, uh, Jennifer Layden's listening in on this and make sure that she, uh, keeps her ear to that, that one as well. That's, that's my report and summary of those boards. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, um, a follow-up from Lori Robinson's guest, uh, presentation. Two things about the pipeline. One is, um, in the select board's response to the EverSource, one of the things, uh, was, you know, a study about the possibility of the bridge collapsing. You know, what, give us an assessment of that. Uh, I think what we also want to ask them, and I think we should ask this as a board and hopefully Mark can do this, is I'd like to see some traffic studies come out of these guys because if you take a look at the routes, three of the routes involve Conver Street, which is might be the most heavily trafficked street in town, except for Long Meadow Street. And two of their pla- plans include Long Meadow Street. Um, I think some sort of traffic study would be absolutely, uh, really significant to know because I have a feeling if any one of these routes are adopted, the in-and-outs of Long Meadow are going to be really, really difficult. And I think it would be, um, it would be really, I think that'd be really helpful. And I think that's one of the things that we can ask them. I hope the deciding board will ask them, but that's something that I think in terms of impact on the town, where, where they want to put this pipe, it's definitely going to have a significant impact on our transportation. And I think that we, it's not out of the realm of, I think it's, it's shown in our purview to ask them to provide us with some traffic studies. Second issue on, on the pipeline and, um, this is for Lynn to ask for our attorney. The, um, EverSource filed two, um, two plans with the state, a five-year plan and a safety assessment plan. Uh, we have become intervenors in those plans. They are now in the phrase, uh, the phase, um, where if we want to intervene and call witnesses and do discovery, there is a window of opportunity for us to do that should we want to. But since we're on record as interveners, we may want to. Uh, this is something I think that our attorney would have to talk to us about. Um, but, you know, this is all public information. And so the Attorney General's Office has extended this, the, the, the time we can make our, our request for, uh, to make a, uh, to be witnesses and for discovery. And I think that Lynn, you probably want to talk to our attorney and see if this is something that, uh, he intends to do or just not. Uh, but since we did have him make us interveners, if this is, if this is the point where he wants to take some action or if he's going to wait till they, um, submit to the sitting board, which they still have yet to do. But they have submitted these two other plans and, uh, the Attorney General's Office is involved in, in, in questioning them. And since we are interveners, we should find out if we're going to do the same. So. That's my statements on the pipeline.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Mark, I, uh, for the board, we, we got this letter, um, this week, February 4th from the, uh, DPW and it was with our, um, our water bill. And I've been hearing from a lot of people that they're happy that the, the, what they had to pay this time was much more reduced. Um, and, um, and they're, you know, so this is good news. This is good news. The water system, I know we talked a lot about winter averaging and the way water bills are going to be worked out over the quarter of the period. And, uh, so, uh, I've been getting positive feedback from residents about it and I hope we, uh, can keep getting positive feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Josh.
Well, thanks to Mark Gold for catching the error on the billing and getting, I, I got $34 credit. I, I don't understand it, um, and, but that's why I'm glad there's Mark Golds of the world to read the bills. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, I, I'm jumping the gun a little bit on, uh, Lynn's report, but I, our COVID numbers are going down. Uh, again, I'm very happy to see that. I hope it stays that way. And, um, I, also I, I was on mute most of the time. It is absolute bedlam in my house until about eight o'clock when my kids go to bed. I'm hoping we get to go back in person soon. Um, it would be a lot easier for me and I, I think it's good for people to be able to see us all in a room together. And when we do go to that, uh, when that happens, I, I'm hoping we can, uh, the state will allow us to keep away of allowing people to get in remotely so that, uh, we can keep the accessibility open to that. I, I know it can be a, I'm not positive for people who may have access issues or just can't get, uh, over to the high school for, uh, an hour. Um, so if that is a possibility, I, I don't know if we have, we have any idea of how that's going to work. But if we could do that and have some sort of hybrid, uh, I, I think that would be best. Um, but like I said, I, I hope we can get back into person soon, uh, get some normalcy and I can, uh, not have to listen to crashing and screaming for an hour every, every other Monday.
Amen. Anybody else? Okay, uh, on to the town manager's report.
Hey, thank you. Uh, and Josh, you're right, um, our COVID case numbers are dropping quite drastically, which is a great sign. Uh, when I reported on January 18th, we had 262 cases. As of today, we had 65. So it's, uh, going in the right direction. Um, for whatever reason, the town manager report that was uploaded to the agenda, both tried by myself and by Mike to fix, uh, did not come through with the chart. So, eh, for anybody that wants it, we'll email it out afterwards. We've been troubleshooting it with our website company. Uh, but there was a chart there that showed a breakdown of the January cases that we had. We had 810 cases in January and it just gave you, um, a color pie chart of the breakdown of who those cases were by age. Um, and it was a pretty, um, pretty dispersed group, um, with the biggest categories being those in the groups of 43 to 63 and, um, looks like six to 12-year-olds. So I don't think that's surprising at all. Um, but if you do want to see that chart, I can, I'm happy to email it out to you and we'll try to get the website, uh, fixed for it anyway. Uh, moving on to a different topic, uh, the Veterans Service Mediation Certification. Um, I'm pleased to say that our Veterans Service Officer, Lena Valturo, recently completed coursework to achieve a Veterans Services Mediation Certification. Uh, completing this program now provides Lena and the town, uh, with another tool to help veterans in our community. Many times Lena's worked with veterans who've, who've been struggling or sometimes, um, have areas of conflict that they need help working out. Skills she's learned at the training's already helped in de-escalating some of those situations and she's enhanced her listening skills. Uh, and, um, she's being, all of these tools have both had, helped her to, uh, help veterans feel empowered to make better decisions for themselves. Uh, and this was a completely voluntary thing that Lena signed up for to do. So a lot of credit to Lena for doing that. Regarding the adult center, we have a pause still on meals, um, in, on per, onsite meal consumption. This is now in effect till the end of February. Uh, the Council on Aging and Adult Center staff has been working hard, looking at all the data with a hope to lift this, uh, for March, but we'll have a better idea on that in the last two weeks of February. Uh, two program assistants have been hired for the adult center to provide night and weekend hours. The goal is to expand these hours in March and as soon as we know, uh, for sure, I'll make sure to bring that information back to the board. Um, and the ability to offer these hours this year and next fiscal year was made possible through a generous donation of the Long Meadow Adult Center Community Fund. And the Town Moderator's Electronic Voting Task Force has issued a final report. It's available on the town website. If you go to longmeadow.org and click Government, on the right-hand side, you'll see Town Meeting and there's a link there for the report. Uh, a purchase order is going to be prepared and we'll move ahead with the purchase of the electronic voting, uh, tool using ARPA funds. We're hoping to have the clickers in advance of the May town meeting, but with supply chain issues that we've seen across every area of purchasing, um, it's possible that we won't have them in time. So as soon as we do make that order and we have a estimated shipping date, I will bring that back to the board as well. And that concludes my report and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Anybody have questions for Lynn? Very good. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is, uh, our meeting minutes from January 18th. Looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 18th, 2022.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, so, yeah, as I look at those minutes, um, it, it really, uh, like resident's comments, you know, there's a paragraph, uh, but there were some of the topics that we discussed as a select board and I didn't see much in the way of comments on there. And I think it is important that some of the comments we make in regards to agenda items get put into this documented. And so, I mean, I'll, I'll approve them, but I, I just think in, in future minutes, people should, whoever writes them, I guess it's Mark, but I would just say that, um, yeah, you, I, this was, maybe you didn't have much time, but usually.
Um, I, I could look back, I could look back at my notes and, and the record to see what I did miss and could definitely add in there if you want to amend the motion to include that. That's up to you. But I can definitely do that.
Well, I, I guess I want to hear from other board members. It just seemed that usually there is more comments than this one. I don't know if anyone else noticed that.
I, I noticed it also.
You did that also? Okay, yeah. Um, so would you want to have him add some of those comments?
You know, uh, i- i- if we could, it'd be great, but I'm not sure it's necessary. I mean, it, it, it makes it for a more complete historical record, which is the purpose of the minutes. I mean, you know, it's rare that we've gone back to them, but the times we have, it's important and only because we now have videotapes, but it's important to have that, that record. So the videotapes, the extent they're not public records, they're not, they're part of LCTV, not the town, but they have filled in the, some of the gaps.
So where are we on this?
Well, if we could wait until the next meeting and have some, uh, additional comments put in, I, I'd feel good about it.
Um, so do we need to, to, can somebody withdraw the motion or do, do we need to vote on whether we want to approve the minutes?
I'd happily withdraw the motion.
All right.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Uh, next up is an update on the EverSource Western Mass Natural Gas Reliability Project. Um, Steve Rance had, uh, addressed, you know, the, um, a couple of updates in a select board comments with respect to the new, two new, um, um, proceedings that are before DPU that we've intervened in and Steve. um proceedings that are before DPU that we've intervened in, and Steve, if you're gonna to chime in with additional information after I'm done. Uh but we also know that Eversource was originally planning on filing uh with the FSB in January. Uh but we received a um a notification from them that they were not filing in January and and that we don't have a a date for when they might be ultimately filing with the FSB. Um so I think that was the extent of 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 my update, uh Steve, unless you had something else to add.
Uh no, except that I think I'd be very interested if we should follow what the Attorney General has to say, because the Attorney General's office had a lot of a lot of questions about Eversource's five-year plan and their safety reliability. And we'll see, I I, you know, I think we should find out what Kalanoff has to say if we wanna piggyback on this stuff or just watch the Attorney General go to work or put our own stuff in. But I mean, this is, the whole idea is is not for Eversource to say, well, look, this the Western Mass, whatever name of this project is now, was in our plans, and you guys didn't do anything about it. So, hey, you know, it must be okay. That's what they will probably say when they get to the the sitting board. So that's why it'd be nice to hear from Kalanoff on this, but you know, at this stage of the game, it's, you know, it's all a waiting game to see what Eversource does and when they file.
Okay. Lynn, you didn't have anything to add, did you? Okay. Uh next up, the streetlight policy in agreement.
Since we reviewed it the last meeting, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the adopt the streetlight policy in agreement as distributed.
Any further discussion? Yeah, Josh, go ahead.
A question on it, um I know that when I'm trying to get rid of old light bulbs, it's a terrible pain, and they need to be broken down, et cetera. Does the DPW have a a system for what they do with the lights that is just the LED bulbs when they pull them out?
First of all, first of all, Josh, they have a system, but it's not for these bulbs. The DPW doesn't handle these lights at all. It's done by a an outside contractor who has a massive recycling system for it. So we have a a service contract for handling uh streetlights, the DPW. It doesn't have lifts and that kind of stuff. So the answer to your question is yes, and anyway, they are all reci- all recycled by this uh vendor.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any other comments? Mike, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakisa?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh up next, the updated fiscal twenty-two select board and town manager goals.
Thanks, Mark. Um so I I wanted to include this as an agenda topic tonight to just give you a brief update uh on the goal document that was created in August. Um after that lengthy meeting where we added quite a few items, I think we added, I wanna say ten, maybe eight. Uh we had created that Google Doc that listed them all, gave an overview, and then had a page for each um goal that had a little more substance to it. So we've gone through and updated that entire document. Um I'm happy to say that most of the projects are either fully on their way or um you know, in a really good place right now, given that it's only been about six months' time since we created this list. Uh I think for the agenda purpose tonight, it's just a static one-page document so that we could get the um some document to link onto the agenda. But for the select board members, I believe you all have a link to the Google Drive, so you can look at the document yourself. Um I'm happy to go through these individually if you want, um or if you wanna take some time to look at it, we could have this come back up uh at one of the next meetings. Um there's just a few on here that have not started yet. Uh actually, just just three that don't have a lot of progress that we've highlighted in orange. All the yellow highlighted ones are fully in progress. And um I believe some of the green ones are ones that have wrapped up. So there's four, one, two, five of them that are um wrapped up or, you know, have completed as far as they can go. Three of them are orange, meaning they really haven't had any progress at all, and the bulk of them are yellow, and they're fully involved at the moment.
Go ahead, Josh.
Uh Lynn, thanks. I'm glad to see the progress on here. Um I I just had a question on the one of the oranges, the pilot agreement with Bay Path. How much, how much the old agreement, how much was the yearly payment under that program?
Ooh, um I wanna say it's in the sixty or seventy thousand dollar range. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but it's it's no more than eighty thousand tops.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Now, Lynn, thank you. This is a phenomenal document. It's great that it's tracked. It's great that you that we've we've made so much progress on it. I think it's it'd be great to almost make this available from our town website, because I think it shows town residents that despite all that's going on around us, the our staff, which is primarily you led by you, is is making great progress on the things that we deemed important six months ago, and they continue to make progress. I I think this is one of the best documents we've seen in a while in terms of tracking and and also the progress we've made. So I just wanted to acknowledge that statement. Thanks.
Thanks, and thanks for pointing that out. Um because I also note that I don't think the word COVID's on here anywhere. So to be able to have a list of goals that does not have COVID in there is pretty substantial right now. Um and it it's representative of all of the town departments that have their hand in all of these goals getting done. And we've noticed um significant progress in a lot of these areas with um the onboarding of the Assistant Town Manager. And that has been a critical position to be able to move a lot of this stuff forward.
You know, but Lynn, as my boss used to say, we obviously didn't make the list long enough. You made this progress in six months.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, uh just one question, Lynn, with the electric chargers for automobiles. Exactly how do those work? I don't have one, but um do they have to pay for that or is it where's the electricity come from?
Yes, so they um they would have to pay. Uh we have a policy that we're developing right now that will need to come back to the select board for a vote. Um communities are doing them all different ways, uh but in Long Meadow, we would uh have a policy where the user would pay for it, just as if you were fueling up a vehicle at a gas station.
Okay, so is this like a swipe a card or pay with their phone, that kind of thing?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Lynn, are these uh chargers universal? I mean, since they're, I I drive a Tesla, that's one thing. If I drive a Hyundai, that's another. I mean, they all still, they're work on all vehicles?
Correct, yeah. The system we're looking at is called Anel X, and they are a universal one. It's not a Tesla Supercharger.
Anybody else? Very good.
Great, thank you.
Uh thanks is our quarterly investment report.
I'm moving in Erica Brunel now. If it works, if it ever tries to work for me. There you go.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with my computer. Give me just one moment here. Okay, I can't get my video on, so I'm just gonna proceed if that's okay with you guys.
Please do.
Okay, I apologize for the delay. So I'm here tonight to present my investment report for the quarter ending in December twenty twenty-one. Um I'm happy to say that for the most part, our interest rates have stayed consistent, but we did see a noteworthy drop with Westfield Bank, um going from point four zero percent to point two-two percent. Um and again, otherwise, they have stayed the same. But I did find out since my memo that Adam Savings Bank will be dropping as well from point six-zero percent to point five-zero percent. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um otherwise, again, consistency across the board, which is encouraging. Hopefully, we'll see him going in the other direction shortly. Um it's also noteworthy this quarter that Eastern Bank bought out Century Bank, but that has not made any difference in our services with Eastern Bank. So nothing to be concerned about at this time. We're still monitoring the interest rates. Those have stayed the same since the buyout, but just a name and change or change in name, as you'll see on the spreadsheet. Um and another very encouraging note is the investment in our OPEB reserves. So this quarter over last quarter, we've more than doubled our interest that we have found in the investment. So it went from one hundred and eleven thousand ninety-one dollars up to two hundred and seventy-eight seven oh five for the quarter. So that's very encouraging to see with an ending balance for the quarter of five million six hundred seventy-seven thousand and eighty dollars. So it's really great to see. We're gonna continue to work on our interest rates and make sure we're putting our funds in the highest possible yielding accounts as we can. Pretty much everything else has stayed the same. I don't have too too much more to report, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer that for you guys.
Thank you, Erica.
No problem.
Anybody have questions?
No.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Erica, just a quick question. In the OPEB report, it said that it shows there's five hundred thousand dollars in exchanges. What does that mean?
So in November, I transferred in five hundred thousand dollars because there was an article on the November Town Meeting authorizing five hundred thousand dollars to be moved in.
Okay, so that was a that was a new deposit then?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Erica, I just had a question on the other side of the interest rates, um not what we get. But in terms of our loans, is there a point in the year where you would look at if we should refinance our loans at a lower rate?
So I believe that's all done when we go to bond um in the spring. We look at all of that with our financial advisors at Unipay, and if they decide that we should refinance some of the bonds to come in at a lower rate, or if we should take some of the articles within the bonds and do a ban rather than a bond, because interest rates are lower and it's advantageous. Um we do all of that when we're doing our bonding. So our financial advisors at Unipay are great. They do this with all of the municipalities, so they really know what they're looking for. Whereas I might have a very general idea, but I might not be able to get into the knit and grit of it as they do, but we absolutely do look at it every year.
Okay, and the way things are changing in that area, does it look like we might be able to uh save some money with the interest rates?
Um I think it's still kind of hard to tell right now, and it also depends what we end up needing to borrow for this year. If there are a lot of big projects that require us to take on bonds. Um I I'm gonna say we're probably gonna be looking at bonds rather than bands, but it really comes down to those interest rates. And I think it's a little bit too early to tell right now because there is such fluctuation in the market still. Um I'll definitely be reaching out to Unipay probably in another month or so, just to get an idea of where those interest rates stand, and I can give you an idea then. Um but I hate to guess on that right now with the fluctuations.
Okay, Erica, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Erica. Have a good night.
Thank you, you as well.
Uh next up are the updated projections of fiscal twenty-three. Mike, is Jennifer, is that Erica or is Jennifer here?
I represent. I'm trying to move her in now. For some reason, my screen's lagging.
Thank you.
There we go.
Good evening.
Jen?
I'm hoping to share my screen so I can just go through this relatively easy. There we go. Can you all see that? Um so just wanted to take a minute um to give the select board an update of where we are in the budget. Um hopefully, this won't be too painful. Uh to give you a rough idea of our twenty-two budget. Um we left three hundred and eleven thousand on the table for unused capacity and had a pretty and it had a very um stable balanced budget approved um by the by the state um for our tax rate back in November. Um from there, projections were presented using the FY twenty-two budget for a gap of five hundred and eleven thousand. That was a PowerPoint presentation um I gave back in November. We did about um three percent increase on all of our expenses and kept our uh state aid and local receipts stable, but used the prop two and a half percent. Um I'm sorry, used one point seven five percent and a hundred and seventy-five thousand in growth in those projections. Um from there, we asked departments, um sent them their request in the middle of January. That increased our gap to a little bit over a million dollars, still sustaining that unused, that one point seven five percent or four hundred thousand dollars in unused capacity, trying to build a budget, um you know, not using the two and a half percent. And now with the governor's budget that came out, um we saw a major increase in um the Chapter Seventy money, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and about forty-one thousand in UGA funds. Um that brought us down, that reduced our gap to six hundred and forty-two thousand. Um so that's where we are overall. Um Lynn and I have been meeting regularly on this, and um we do have some options that um we can look at that we'll obviously keep you guys up to date and posted. But um this is just thirty thousand feet of where we are in the budget process. Any questions on projections or, you know, what we use for numbers? This does include um a couple of things uh has been updated with the school department's numbers presented last week to the school committee and does include uh water and sewers rates that were given out. I believe uh they distributed them on a webinar last Thursday I was on, so that's our most up-to-date numbers with with those two.
I I can't see everybody, so um I'm gonna start with Mark and see if he has any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, I do. Jennifer, where where does our current year fiscal twenty twenty-two revenue come in relative to that budget and also relative to what you were projecting for twenty twenty-three revenue? I'm saying specifically, you know, is revenue in any cases, usually we look at motor vehicle excise tax. We look at some other areas where the revenue is coming in above where we projected, and therefore we can project higher next year. Any of those number?
Sure, so I this is uh column Q, the increase or decrease over FY twenty-two. And under the local receipts, we are, um I can't read it. Let me move this grid. Uh we are projecting an additional thirty thousand over motor vehicle. Um that's roughly under ten percent. That's what the um DLS and uh Secretary Heffernan had projected as well statewide on on their projections, and we're adding an additional thirty thou- uh ten thousand for recycling just based on our actual collections. And again, daycare was only half the year last year, so we've added or half the year in the budget. Where we're shoring that up in the FY twenty-three budget and adding an additional two hundred K there.
Okay, so the bottom line is you've incorporated revised revenue into this, what I'll call the six hundred and forty-two thousand dollar number then?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other select boards have questions? I again, I can't see you, so just go ahead and speak up. I, again, I can't see you, so just, uh, go ahead and speak up. Enough easy tonight. Thank you for that. Uh, so this is just an update, right? We don't need to do any, any voting, or?
No, just wanted to keep you guys in a loop of what, what, uh, the process has been, and, and what we had to do for, uh, what the department sent in, what schools sent in, and we can go into the details at a different, different meeting, or now if you have other questions.
Thank you.
Mark, if you want, I can, just for the public's sake, who may be watching, uh, this is just a, a brief um, look ahead on what we're pulling together for the FY twenty-three budget. At your next meeting on February twenty-second, you will have the capital planning recommendation and the school committee's recommendation, recommended budget. Uh, and then March seventh, I present the town's budget to you. Then you'll, at some point, if you want, hold department budget meetings, uh, usually the days following, and then March twenty-first would be your vote on the budget.
Thank you. Okay, there's no more questions, we'll, uh, hop over to the diff procedures.
Um,
Mark?
I'm just gonna make the motion, I mean, we've done this, we do this every year, but unless other people need an explanation of why we're doing it.
Oh, for the diff, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the select board utilize eighty-six point four percent of the white road improvement district's incremental tax uh, revenues in establishing the FY twenty twenty-three district improvement financing budget.
A second then. Uh, any discussion? All right, Mike, can you please call the roll? Yes.
Mr. Rance?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Uh, very good, uh, so on to our fiscal twenty audit findings update.
Sure, a couple of months ago, I was at, um, the audit, when the auditor came and presented, it was asked, um, to give the select board an update, maybe quarterly or biannually, on where we were with the, um, management letter, letter given in FY twenty. So any, just, uh, for some background, any findings pre-FY twenty have all been, uh, taken care of, and the auditor, um, has been, um, satisfied. So the only outstanding, um, findings, uh, were from the FY twenty audit, and they were mainly had to do with procedures. Um, there are four findings altogether, two in the Parks and Recreation Department, and two in the Treasure Collectors Department. In the Parks and Recreation Department, um, the auditor suggested that the, um, write-offs that were happening didn't have enough checks and balances in place. Um, so we've implemented the treasure or collectors townwide collection policy across all departments. And, um, so now they're responsible to go through a s- a series of steps in order to collect appropriately, and then if a particular, um, receivable is deemed uncollectible, the department head will sign off on that and bring it either to myself or my designee to sign off as, uh, something to be written off. So prior to that, that process wasn't in place, so we've implemented that and have already gone through that, um, one time already. Uh, secondly, in Park and Rec, um, our current, uh, contract with our software company, ActiveNet, uh, reads that ActiveNet will collect all revenues and deduct their fees, and then send the town a check. Um, the auditor, uh, recommended that we put the gross revenue in our, our book of record in Munis, put the write-off in Munis as a journal entry, so that we can see exactly, um, how all that revenue happened, and, and that those write-offs happened. So, um, I spoke to Parks and Recs, and we're in the middle of that contract update right now, and um, their, their bookkeeper will be doing that on a monthly basis, working with accounting to book that journal entry. Um, so that process should be deemed, um, satisfied with, with the auditor. Going on to the treasure collector issues, um, they just asked that the town reevaluate some, the bonding insurance on an annual basis. Um, so the Department of Revenue puts out a performance bond amount schedule, um, and I'm not sure if we were adequately covered at that time, we are adequately covered right now. So, um, in our closeout fiscal eater and process, we will be reviewing that, um, that were updated, uh, with any changes that the, the department revenue makes in that schedule. And lastly, um, the auditor asked that letters be sent out to per- to banks periodically, and the treasure collector has reported on that to you guys in prior meetings. Um, she's contacted all the banks, and I believe there were two, two, um, accounts open under Long Meadow that didn't have any money in it, but that we couldn't kind of, um, uh, rectify where they came from, so she had those closed right away. So that's it, that's, uh, pretty much where we are, hopefully they'll be all set, um, when sent in to the auditor.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mark.
And Jennifer, are, are these being tracked through, through an audit correction? We used to give them an audit correction report, are you still using that to, to track these? Uh, addressing the issues brought up by the auditor all?
Um, that's the first time I'm hearing about it, I can do some research and.
I can, I can send you a copy of an old one, that, if you want, but, no, it's serious, just something you know, rather than go try to dig through one, because it, it just put all this stuff in writing, and, and it was, it was a good record both for us, but also for the auditors, rather than the report you're writing, and, and left a good record. Anyway, if you want, I may find one tomorrow anyway, and just send it to you.
Sure. That'd be, that'd be helpful.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Very good, very good. So that brings us to the end of our time together, sadly. Um, our next meeting is February twenty-second, right? Is the twenty-first is President's Day, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I hope everyone has a good night, um, well, we did a motion to adjourn, right? Let's forget that.
All moves.
Second.
Uh, Mike, can you call the roll, please?
Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Rance?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. LaCusa?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, see you on the twenty-second. Have a good night.